Commissioners for Work Session, it is Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. It is 2:01 PM, this is set to go until 3:00 PM. We're in Building 1, Room 280, this is a hybrid meeting. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on a Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mihia, I'm the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Messer joining me here in the Boardroom, as well as County Manager Armiro Chavez. We also have an array of staff from Public Works, as well as some guests joining us via Zoom. And the topic on today's agenda is Noxious Weed Control Board, and this is an informational session. So with that, Tim?
Okay, Tim, if you could introduce the staff and members of the board who's joined us via Zoom.
Great, absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Thurston County Public Works. And we are here today to talk about the Thurston County Noxious Weed Control Board and the Noxious Weed Program. With me in-house today, Mike Murphy, a Noxious Weed Specialist 2 with the program. Abby, to his left, is a recently hired Noxious Weed Specialist 1. We have Claire, to her left, who is a Seasonal Weed Inspector for the program this year. And then Heidi is a Noxious Weed Specialist 2 as well. Virtually, we have a couple Board members. We have our Weed Board Chair, Carol Pinning, who has been with the Board, I want to say, since 2015, if I have that right. And also David Mills, who is a District 2 Board Member, and he has been with the Board since 2019. And he has found time out of his workday to join us today, so I appreciate both the Board members being here. Just a quick introduction, each year we try to schedule some time with the Board to highlight the Noxious Weed Program and give the Commissioners an opportunity to engage with both the Noxious Weed Control Board members and staff. As you mentioned, the briefing is informational only, and while we've scheduled an hour, we may very well give you some time back today. It shouldn't take a long time. Armiro, if we want to go to the next slide, or I can operate it, or whatever. Thank you. Let me take me a minute to get my bearings here. And how do I advance, just click, right-click?
I believe so.
How's that? That work?
Yep.
Probably the wrong way.
Should be right on the lower bar, should be at an arrow left to right.
Oh, I see it, okay, very good, thank you. Look at that, five districts. What's that? I said, look at that, five districts. I thought we'd wobble for you. Absolutely. So, yes, very observative. The Noxious Weed Control Board consists of five voting members and one non-voting member, who is the County Extension Agent in every county. Carol, as mentioned, is the District 1 Board Member and the Chair of the Weed Board. David Mills, District 2. Paul Thompson, District 3. Our District 4, you've likely heard before, is vacant, has been for several years now, and we would be very excited to have that seat filled. Fran Sant represents District 5 and is the Vice Chair. The areas are broken up geographically, so that they have a similar size. It's not by population, it's by size. The Board members are appointed by the Board for four-year terms. It is a bit of a unique application process, and that is by statute, in that anyone interested in serving on the Board has to submit an application and also has to go out into the community and get the signature of 10 registered voters within the district that they would serve. They would then apply to the Noxious Weed Board itself. The Weed Board recommends to the Board of County Commissioners the most qualified applicant for the Board to appoint. Question?
Yes, that seems so different from, you know, what our other Boards and Commissions do. Is that by statute that they're supposed to get the 10 signatures?
It is, it is. Per RCW 1710, and it's very old, and equated, and unique. Three of the five members must be involved in agriculture or aquaculture. That can be interpreted very loosely, that can be a hobby farm as well. And most of our Board members are either working adults or in the farming community, so it's a little bit tough for them to attend during the day. So we're very fortunate to have our two Board members here. So, I can look at there. Okay, just real quickly again, our staff with us today, Mike Murphy, been with the program since 2017. Heidi Steinbach has been with the program since 2020. Both Abby and Claire were hired this year, so have quickly hit the ground running. Paula Cracknell, who is our Aquatic Resource Specialist, you know Paula, is off today, but along with working with the Lakes Program, about 40% of her time is assigned to Noxious Weed activities at this point. Look at our County Manager face chart. Commissioner Edwards and I are advocates for that. Thank you for making that. Can I, I do want to stop right now and just, I should have asked at the beginning, our Weed Board Chair, Carol, do you have anything to add before we start, or would you like to comment as we go along?
Thanks, thanks for the opportunity, and no, you're doing a great job, and I'll just sit here quietly and get frantic if I feel like I need to pounce in on something. Thanks.
Okay, very good. So just real briefly, why counties have Weed Boards in the first place, and what the programs look like. In 2017, the state of Washington did a study on the economic impact of 200 invasive species that included noxious weeds in Washington State. The species studied included some of the noxious weeds found in Thurston County, including the knapweed species, purple loosestrife, invasive knotweed, Eurasian water milfoil, some pretty common noxious weeds. So the results of that study basically told them what I think we all knew, is that there is a significant impact by invasive species, including noxious weeds. The total in 2017 across Washington State was over $1 billion in impact. Breaking it down at that time, about $47.6 million was the impact to Recreation. A little over $100 million was the impact to our water resources, lakes, rivers, Puget Sound, aquaculture, those types of things. Livestock is impacted significantly, as is timber and crops as well.
So is that a negative impact?
That is a negative impact. So I wanted to talk real briefly about noxious weed laws and regulations. So noxious weed laws in Washington State are some of the oldest laws. They predate statehood, the earliest noxious weed law was passed in 1881. It originally was intended to ensure the counties themselves were managing noxious weeds along their rideaways and not affecting agricultural lands. The rideaways, railroads, rivers are major conduits for noxious weeds. So at that time, that is the main form of spread for a lot of the noxious weeds. RCW 1710, which I mentioned, is a law related to authority of state and local Weed Boards, and establishes that all property owners are responsible to prevent and control the spread of noxious weeds. WAC 16750 is the law that establishes the noxious weed list, establishes enforcement procedures, and monetary penalties for violations of noxious weed law. And within our own code, Chapter 17, our environmental code, seeks to limit economic loss from noxious weed and allows for noxious weed containment zones. So if we have a relatively new species that runs the risk of spreading through development or any other cause, then we can contain that within a containment zone and put some rules around that until that noxious weed is controlled or eradicated. Okay, to first look at the designations of noxious weeds is a little bit confusing and complex. There are three legal weed designations that are used in Washington State. And the main point is, when we think about weed designations and how we prioritize, either at the state level or at the county level, our efforts regarding noxious weed control, the focus is generally on new invaders of high risk first, and then kind of cascades down from there. So Class A noxious weeds are the highest priority. Typically, those are mandated by the state. If you find them in your county, you must have them controlled within that year. So the highest focus is on those Class A weeds. They're typically new invaders that run some risk, either to the agricultural community, or they could be poisonous, or they could impact salmon habitat. There's a whole list of criteria for establishing the rationale for listing those species. In Thurston County, we have 38 species that are considered Class A, and six of those at current time are present in Thurston County. The Class B noxious weeds, control is required in the state where they are designated. So they may be designated for control in southwest Washington, but not designated for control in northeast Washington, because they're already well-established within that geographic region. There are 71 species on the list that are Class B designates, and 25 of those are present in Thurston County. Additionally, with the Class B weeds, the local Noxious Weed Board has the authority per law to add weeds to that list that are B classified. So currently, there have been six additional weeds that have been selected by the local Weed Board for control. Class C noxious weeds can be selected for control by the local Weed Board. Currently, we have three of those selections. These are typically widespread, non-native plants. So think some of the blackberry species, reed canary grass, Scotch broom is one that is just so widespread that we have lost containment and really lost the ability to control those effectively without spending more resources than we have to control those. So overall, currently, we have 34 species listed for control in Thurston County. Those can be terrestrial weeds that affect upland agriculture, they can be aquatic weeds. And later on in the presentation, Mike will highlight four of these species for you. So I wanted to talk real briefly about funding the Noxious Weed Board. So in Washington State County, Noxious Weed Control Boards are funded generally through either the General Fund or a moderate special use assessment. If we break it down across the state, 10 counties are funded via the General Fund. 27 counties now have gone to an assessment, that includes Thurston County. And we'll talk a little bit more about the details of that on an upcoming slide. And one county is funded through basically contracted service agreements. So it's complicated, but they go out and they manage the vegetation along their roadsides. Public Works pays them to do that, and it funds their noxious weed program. The way that Thurston County's Noxious Weed Assessment works, first of all, it's been in place since 1981, with a couple of updates along the way, a couple increases in that assessment. As it stands currently, forest lands are charged at 44 cents per parcel, plus just under 3 cents per acre. So for a 100-acre parcel of forest land, that owner would be looking at $3.28 a year. So some other lands, all other lands, $4.40 per parcel, plus 40 cents an acre, up to five acres. Any acreage above that five acres is charged at a lesser rate of 15 cents an acre. So if a resident has a house on less than an acre, they are charged $4.40 a year. If they have a house out in the county that is sitting on a five-acre piece, they could expect to pay $6.40 a year. And there are some exemptions to that. Federally owned land, tribal loan land is exempt from the assessment. There's an exemption for senior and disabled, utility-only parcels, and some other parcels are exempt as well. The assessment generates about $530,000 a year annually.
How much, you said?
About $530,000.
$530?
Yes. And it changes a little bit every year as parcels are divided. Just talk real briefly about our program itself. So staff here today are responsible for going out and inspecting all of the known noxious weed sites and capturing any new sites that they may come across over the course of the year, and documenting those, entering those into a database, contacting the property owners, and working those through the system. In 2021, there were 4,496 different sites that were inspected, so there's a lot of them. And that is actually down a little bit from previous years. It typically runs right around 5,000 sites each year that staff is engaged with. We have a very strong technical assistance program that we've worked to develop over the last five or six years. We have hundreds of technical assistance visits or phone calls each year. Those are staff getting on the phone or getting face-to-face with property owners, talking to them about what they have on their property, and either control options for that, or, you know, it could extend into cultural methods to reduce the amount of noxious weeds on their property, how they're pasturing their property, are they overgrazing? That kind of technical assistance, we've developed pretty well. We also have a rideaway program, so the over 1,000 miles of county road shoulder has to be maintained. We kind of have the philosophy of taking care of our own house first, and the same staff maintains that rideaway for several of the noxious weed species that are concerned of agriculture, Tansy ragwort being the primary one.
Is that compensated by Public Works?
Yes, it is, their time is billed to Public Works for that.
What did you say about Tansy ragwort?
Tansy ragwort, which I think is one of the ones...
I saw a picture of it, I didn't hear what you said about it.
Tansy ragwort is one of the common noxious weeds. It's a historically common noxious weed and appears a lot in our rideaways, so staff pulls that. As they're out and about, they make sure the rideaways are clear of Tansy ragwort, or as clear as feasible.
Is that a chemical application or manual?
Mostly, mostly manual, going out and pulling it and bagging it and taking it to the landfill.
Can I ask something really about, you know, I'm seeing kind of the problem plants, and I'm seeing the noxious weeds. And, you know, for me, like ivies everywhere in Thurston County. Like you go through all of the parks, and it's just filled with ivies. So why is that not considered a noxious weed, since it's...
Does anybody want to speak?
I can speak to that view. So ivy, there are some things that are actually on this list that are technically noxious weeds, but not every noxious weed, like Tim explained, requires control in every county. And that's based on the impact and also the distribution in the specific county that you're working in. So Scotch broom, pampas grass, Himalaya blackberry, English ivy are all on this slide, and they're all technically noxious weeds, but we have too much of it in our counties to fairly regulate it or feasibly eradicate the species. So that's unfortunately why those plants don't require control.
And we're trying to catch the ivies before they become ivy, you know, and become widespread and get to that point where they're just so unruly to try to control.
Yeah, and the problem plant language, they chose to use that to not confuse members of the public that were using this sheet to reference and figure out what they could dispose of for free. Yeah.
Pampas grass, you can sell it now, it's a decorative thing. We drive, it's a trend.
It's a, has been a historical struggle for the state Weed Board to monitor, and now with Amazon and the things you can do online and order online, to regulate the purchase of noxious weeds. Well, and if you think about milfoil or eladilla or some of those common noxious weeds that are just wreaking havoc on our lakes and water systems, those got their start in fish aquariums, and people dumping out their fish aquariums and those types of things. Thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, no, great question, we get that a lot.
Is a weed wrench like a tool for pulling it yourself, is that the idea?
Yes. It's just a long bar with a grip like pliers on the bottom, and as you pull it back, it bites into the Scotch broom and just levers it out. We've also put a focus the last few years on increasing our noxious weed education program. So staff will be manning a booth at the Thurston County Fair, which they've done the last few years. Other outreach events, we try to get out there and in the community, because that is our time to get face-to-face with the community. And if you follow social media, which I'm sure you do, Thurston County Social Media, we now put out monthly postcards for noxious weeds, thank you.
For weeds.
Yeah. Which get really good feedback from the community. We are working to improve our website. Postcards go out to people that have been identified to have some of these species on their property, just as kind of a reminder. We have a Good Land Owner Assistance Program. The sheet you're seeing on the presentation there is for a disposal program at the work and at the transfer stations. So part of the Noxious Weed Fund, part of that $530,000, pays for private individuals to dispose of some of their noxious weeds at the work or transfer stations. So the first priority in general for our program is that focus on education and technical assistance. And as a last resort, we would go to enforcement. That is a bit of a shift over the last few years. It used to be a little more, a little quicker to go to that enforcement stage. Staff does an excellent job of providing community service first and just engaging the property owners, try to educate them and work with them so that they can better manage their property.
Tim, could I chime in for just a moment here?
Sure, yes, please, Carol.
Yeah, so I just want to say, in the seven years, I guess at this point, I'm the most senior Weed Board Member, and in the seven years I've been on the Board, there has been only one evening where we had to put liens on properties for uncontrolled weeds. So during the time that, during my tenure on the Weed Board, I'd say I've seen that shift from the more directive to the more technical assistance education standpoint, and it seems to be working like a charm. People just really seem to be, the staff seems to be really out there working with landowners to try to control the weeds, not as cops, but as people who are interested in keeping Thurston County as weed-free as it can be. And I just, I want to just give props to the whole staff for taking that focus on and really trying to make it more of a, we're from the government, we're here to help, than a, we're from the government, we're here to knock you about the head and shoulders approach. It's been really nice to see that change. And I also would like to say that as a frequent walker in Thurston County, I'll spot every once in a while a noxious weed, and these folks are really patient and tireless when members of the public, such as myself, when I'm on a walk, let them know, hey, I saw such-and-such growing in such-and-such a location. They get right on it, get out there and keep it from spreading. So very responsive and very public education to help the public oriented. So kudos to the staff.
Thank you, Carol. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike for a moment, and he is going to go through four of our noxious weed species. Real quick, last year we did more of a focus on some of the aquatic noxious weeds. This year we'll focus on some of the terrestrials. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There we go.
Right, so of the 34 species that we have in the county, most of them are in really low numbers and easily managed. And so we selected these four species to kind of take you through our season in the flow that they occur. All of the following four species, they're all Class B species, and control is required. So our season begins in January, and the first plant we get out and look for is spurge laurel, which is in the Daphne family. It's a toxic plant with toxic sap, it's evergreen. And the reason we're out there looking for it in January is that the understory is clear from other deciduous vegetation, and it's very visible at that time. The big problem with spurge laurel is it's spread by birds, and you can end up with a monoculture like you see in the lower photo there. And so because of the time of year, there's no other weeds out at that time, we were able to assist every landowner that has it, if they allow us permission to come onto their property, and we'll pull it for them and take it to the work for them. And with all of the following four species, I don't think eradication is possible, they're very persistent. Like this one, I look back for the last five years, and it averages about 300 sites per year. F's, we clear out sites, it gives us time to find new sites. So there's, you know, they're always showing up with new sites. So we work on spurge laurel from January through March, then we switch over to poison hemlock. Poison hemlock is a toxic plant in the carrot family. It's got these white umbrella-shaped flowers. Shows up very early, it can be up in late January even on the ground, like you can see in this image. So we get out there and march and look for it, but it's also important to kind of re-drive by some of the areas where you found it, because in June, it shoots up to 12 feet tall with all of its blooms, and you will catch those plants you miss, which is really... is a really bad thing, because a single plant can produce 20,000 to 40,000 seeds, and the seeds are viable for up to seven years. So you get a huge seed bank. And if a site is ever allowed to go to seed, it's so important to catch it that first year, you're working on it for many years. I mean, for, you know, just almost forever. It's really difficult to get, once the seed plant has gone to seeds. And the good thing about this, it's not spread by birds, not spread by wind, but it is spread by moving around soil, because of the seeds in the soil. So a big focus on this is working with all of the rock pits in the county, or any type of place that's moving soil, landscaping places, things like that. And it's also, because of its toxicity, really important to keep it away from livestock, people's gardens. If it were to get baled and hit, it remains just as toxic after it's dry. So now we move into, we're getting into mid-June is when we start working on Tansy ragwort. And this is our biggest, most populous species of weed in the county. And what we get in mid-June, the first step, because before it's blooming, we get out there, drive the roads, and try to pull as much as we can to get a head start on it. And then we start working with private landowners as it's visible and notifying them about it and trying to get them to pull it before it goes to seed. And it's a very difficult weed if a landowner doesn't treat it and a neighbor next to them has treated it because the wind spreads the seeds. And that's why it's also so important for us to get it off the county road. And as you can see, it's toxic to livestock, and it also, it's slowly toxic to livestock, builds up in, in them and can make its way into the, to the food chain, you know, in dairy and meat sources. So as we wrap, so we're in the height of Tansy right now. It's probably going to be completely done within two to three weeks and will have gone to seed. So right now is, is probably the height of all the work we do, trying to notify, you know, these 1,200 sites that are out there. When we complete Tansy, we move into knotweed, starting around mid-August. Knotweed fortunately does not spread by seeds or wind or birds or anything like that, but it does spread by soil movement, and a fragment as small as one inch of any part of this plant can start a whole new infestation. And so for that reason, for example, on our permit, permitting, any construction permits where knotweed is present, we, they're flagged and they come to our office. We confirm that the knotweed is there, we work with the construction crew to show them where it is, and then give them all the information they need to wash their equipment to not move it from that site. Another big issue with knotweed is it can dominate waterways and affect salmon habitat, cause erosion. And so since 2016, we've been treating the entire Deschutes River from all the way down Bald Hill, at Bald Hills Road up to Capital Lake. We walk the entire river each year treating it. And there's definitely a significant reduction in visible knotweed on the river, but the annual maintenance is essential because if we let it go, it can come back really quick. There's side streams coming in and things like that, and beavers cut it down and it'll just float downstream and start new infestations. And starting last year, we started to offer knotweed treatment for private landowners that have small patches on their property, because it's really difficult for a homeowner to do the treatment that's needed to get rid of it. So we're up to 104 private property owners right now that we're treating it for, and I think that we're going to try to maintain that number this year and see how, how that fits into our workflow and how much we can do. But we'll figure out what number we can handle in our time, and probably keep it around 100 people per year. But I guess what the good thing with knotweed is you can eradicate a site. It will be completely gone from that site after a year or two of treatment.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, and with that, we will wrap it up. I just, again, want to, want to thank staff. They really do an excellent job. Can you touch on the screen? Yes, I think. Very good. And also want to, you know, like so many of the boards and committees, it's a bit of a thankless job, and I just really appreciate all of our, all of our board members, including the ones that can't be here today or out farming, and Carol and David just contribute so much to the program and appreciate them for taking time today. With that, we would take any questions.
Thank you. Can my chair, I'm out for questions.
I'm curious how often the board meets and what is the typical agenda? I mean, what is, what are they asked to decide or weigh in on versus what staff's doing as a programmatic, you know, sort of activities?
Carol, would you like to speak to that, or would you like me to speak to that?
I'll start, and then you fill in whatever I forgot.
Okay.
So we're, we're on the calendar, the, the law says we must meet four times a year. Being busy people, we've decided that what we'll do is schedule 10 meetings a year, leaving out, let's see, I think it's May and December that we leave out, with the idea that if there is no business to discuss, then, then we'll just meet our legal obligation to meet quarterly. And sometimes there's a lot to talk about, and sometimes there's not much. One of the big responsibilities that the board has is to adopt the noxious weed list for the year. And Tim can talk a little bit more about the, the mechanics of that. And as I said, the, the, the board also has the responsibility, if there's, say, a recalcitrant landowner or some abandoned property where weeds are really taking over and it becomes necessary to put a lien on the property. I think that's one of the main reasons why there is a Weed Board, and probably harking back to those pre-statehood days, the reason that Weed Board members need to have the support of, of 10 of their neighbors is, you know, if, if there's, if, if the government is going to come in and say, you have to do something about these weeds, or we're slapping a lien on your property, that needs to happen with, with due consideration. And, and like I say, I've only had to do that, and I think most of the properties were abandoned at the time. Then when they go up for sale, it's something that anybody who's purchasing the property knows is a lien on the property, that, that the weeds are a problem and need to be dealt with. So it's, it's, it's sort of a citizen's oversight of the, the staff work, and it's made a lot easier by the fact that the staff is emphasizing the outreach, the education, and that they have these tools to work with, such as loaning out the weed wrenches and paying for the disposal of the noxious weeds. We just basically mostly get to smile nod and say, good job. But we do have some responsibilities to, to make sure that the weed list is appropriate and that property owners are being treated appropriately.
Well, good, Carol. That's a perfect answer to my question.
Yeah, maybe just a follow-up to the imposing, you know, incrementing a lien on those property owners. Can you describe the process? Because it's no, you don't jump from one point all the way to put in a lien.
Yeah.
There is a progressive process that you work with the property owners to address the issues. Can you describe that process, please?
Yeah, I can sure try, although it's, it's been a while, but you're right. We would go out and again, we would start with that initial inspection and that technical assistance. So we would try very hard to engage the property owner, inform them of what the issue is, and help them alleviate that problem first. As Carol mentioned, the violations we've had in the past typically tend to be properties that are abandoned or bank-owned or, you know, in some kind of flux like that. Although an occasional property owner just, you know, will, will get to that stage with a property owner. So the process for that would be that we, if we cannot get voluntary control, we would go to the violation phase, we would issue a violation, we would give them a certain time period to control the noxious weed within their property. If that wasn't done, we would issue a citation for that along with that violation. And then the law states that we can either issue that citation or we can cause it to be controlled. So we can go out and either hire a contractor to do that, or we can do that with our own staff and, and write them an invoice for the costs of doing that. If they don't pay that, then it would go to that lien phase. The board would be heavily involved with that. The, the violator would be afforded a hearing in front of the Weed Board where they could come and, and talk about their conditions and plead their case. Then if it moves beyond that, the lien would be filed and go on record until it was paid.
Because embedded in that process, I believe the law gives you the right of entry.
Yes. Yes, you're right.
So lien is not like an abstract fine, it's a, it's recouping cost that you had to pay to actually go in and remove? Is that...
In, in most cases, that's correct. We, we can, you know, the board has the option to be arbitrary and just issue a citation, and that could be a lien as well. But then the weed doesn't get, you know, the problem doesn't get solved.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, finding somebody 1,000 bucks and putting a lien and then the plant, you know, if you didn't have the right to enter and actually get it done, that could damage a lot of people, based on what you're, you've described today, that this is really, can be a problem, because it's not, some of these things have to be gotten at the front end and et cetera.
Typically, we will, we will have a contractor go in. In the old days, when we used to do more violations, we would have a contractor go in, staff would accompany them. At times, the sheriff's office would accompany them on the property to do their work, and then the cost for that would be billed to the property.
I have two questions. One, kind of following that trend of, as, you know, we're seeing purchases of conservation land, I mean, we're in our own mitigation process, how is that working as we're trying to control it and these lands that are being tried to protect in conservation are, you know, not really being monitored as much as the, you know, agricultural land where someone's going by there every day?
Well, I can tell you, they would, they would still be responsible, just like any other property owner, to control their noxious weeds. I don't know, can you speak to any of the conservation plans?
I go, I'm trying to think, there's a, what's the seed pen, is that who purchases the Habitat Conservation Plan? Well, like, I know they just purchased a parcel on Young Highway, not yet, oh, Highway 507, and another area was...
It was gone into Nino.
Yes, correct. Anyway, well, right away, as soon as they got that, they call us right away, and they're, they're great to work with, because they found poison hemlock, I think the first time they walked it, we went and got it immediately. And I think they're going to be very easy to work with, because, and now we have good communication, they're sending us photos. I think that they'll be much easier to work with than most landowners, actually, because they're interested, I think.
Well, I hope so. They'll probably avoid.
That's right.
And then the $535,000 that's collected, how is that kind of allotted? Is it for staff? Is it for removal? Is there, how is that broken down?
Well, about 30% goes to the inter-fund costs. We heavily use GIS, so that is a major component of our program, and that is charged through inter-fund costs. So about 30%, don't hold me to that, within a percent or two, goes to those internal costs. A big portion of that is staffing, of course. Vehicles, we have a fleet, you know, each inspector needs a vehicle and the tools to go out and, and do their work. Good portion of that is for the disposal program, so having that money available for individuals who want to go and, and dispose of their properties. Education and outreach program is a small component of that. Hopefully, one will develop and will be a little bigger piece as we move forward. But those are the main portions.
But the $530,000, it doesn't cover all of you.
Yeah, I would, I would also say that, well, only a very small portion of my time.
No, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's, there's all the different balance in terms of the funding.
Several grants, several grants. We have very good partners in Washington State Department of Agriculture, Washington DNR, of which Carol was once a big wig, ecology grants. We've been very successful in partnering up with those state agencies for grant dollars.
What is the yearly budget for your program?
I want to say, Romero, like $570,000, $577,000 comes to mind. I'd have to get back to you with the next one.
Any further questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well...
Coach Edwards would have taken with the last 15 minutes.
I know.
It's just kind of, it's just a function of having two of us here today.
We thought we may give you some time back, and that's a good one. Do you want to say, four members?
Yeah. Yeah, do any of the board members want to say something before we adjourn?
Yeah, David Mills here. I'd like to say that I'm really thankful and proud of our staff with the hard work that they do. Mike mentioned about walking the Deschutes River banks and going after noxious weeds, and I believe they truly mean that. They walk the entire banks of the Deschutes River in order to do their job, and it's really mind-blowing to me, some of the stuff I hear that the staff does, and I, I'm just amazed at what they do, and they do a great job.
Thank you. Carol, any last?
No, I feel like I've, I've talked enough. I thank you for your time and attention. I'm always glad that the county commissioners know what the Weed Board is up to, so thanks for your time.
Well, please pass our thanks to the other board members. Thank you so much for coming and being here today and taking time off your busy schedule, and thank you for volunteering on this very important board. I know that it sometimes, it feels like a thankless job, but we really do appreciate, you know, your service on, on this committee. With that, thank you so much to staff for this great presentation. It is 2:47, and you're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.